And join us in the Pledge of the Black. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the... there is a hearing at six thirty, transfer of all alcohol off premise liquor license. Pledge of Ingratory and Pledge of License from S.K.S. Liquor Corp., doing business as Macy's Liquors, to V. Han Incorporated, doing business as Macy's Liquors located at North South Main Street. So this is gonna be tabled, David. What's the proper procedure to open that table?
I would, I would open it, then vote to continue it, do not close it, and we will reopen at the next meeting. And I would ask you to continue it until November fifteenth at six thirty three.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then is there a motion to continue the public hearing to November fifteenth?
So moved.
Second.
At six thirty. Yeah, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, um, we'll see you back in a couple of weeks, and we apologize for that. Thank you for being here, though.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Scott.
Good evening.
Hi, Scott.
How's Scott?
Tonight, we have our annual borrowing for the municipal purpose loan. This is the short-term money we have on the books. Every year, we pay down ten percent or so, and then borrow for anything new. So all the stuff that we approved for borrowing at the last town meeting is on here. On the total amount of the borrowing was three million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars. Uh, we had four bids. The winning bid came in from T.D. Bank at a rate of four point four four percent. Not great.
Yeah, that sounds a little high.
Yeah, no, last year was point four percent, so just the market right now.
But we still have a double A plus.
Yeah, no, our rating didn't change. Nothing changed on it, just the market.
Wow, that is a big jump.
This is on the short term?
This is on the short term, yeah.
That's what's happening.
So, yeah, the Fed just jumped up another point seven five today, so it's probably gonna be going up even more.
What's the long-term rate?
I don't know yet. We haven't done a long-term borrowing in a couple of years, so it'll depend on other factors when we do it. It's hard to predict right now. Um, looking at other communities that have borrowed, last month, everything in like the ten to twelve million range was three and a half to four and a half percent, so it's...
Should we be speculating and maybe thinking about converting some of this short-term into long-term?
We will when there's a good chance for it. Nothing's big enough right now to really warrant it, 'cause just doing that alone costs us about fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, so it's, the savings has to be there for it.
Alright.
So, uh, some of these water articles from last year are the pilot studies. Once they get the actual projects off the ground, we can move those pilot studies into the long-term when we borrow for them, things like that.
I think the rates went up another quarter percent this morn- this morning, I think?
Three quarters.
Was it three quarters?
Yeah. And they're still looking to move it up more, so.
Okay.
Any other questions about the... no?
No, thank you, Scott.
Do you want to make a motion just to award it to T.D. Bank?
Um, sure. Is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and we'll sign them, pray for you.
And signatures, yeah. So, this is the note itself.
This is where I'm signing.
So, it's town clerk's certificate. And then three copies of the tax-exempt covenant stating that it's tax-exempt. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Awesome. Thanks, Scott.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Have a good night.
Um, Mike, would you like to introduce us to the part-time local building inspector?
Sure. Uh, this is Joe Ritchie. He's, uh, fortunate that we had such a good, uh, qualified candidate. He actually was like a last minute, uh, to submit his resume, and he stood head and shoulders above the other candidates, so I'm pleased to introduce him to you and look forward to working with him. How you doing?
Good, how about you?
Good to meet you.
Joe Ritchie, lived in Bridgewater since I was two years old, grew up in East Bridgewater. Currently, my five children live in Bridgewater for the last twenty-two years, twenty-two years. Been in the construction trade since high school, college, and run construction companies, many projects, so, um, this is pretty familiar to me. Known Michael for, you know, through the towns through the years.
Great, welcome, thank you.
Any, um, questions?
Are you related by any chance that go by Ricky versus Richie from Stoughton or Easton?
That's my whole family.
Okay, so that's my whole family, too. I'm a golfer.
Oh, my god, my grandma's a golfer.
Yes, she is.
I thought you looked fat.
There's a lot of us.
There is.
Alright, okay. So, um, seeing how we just became reacquainted...
Is that a conflict of interest?
Well, I, I, I don't think it is. There, there's no personal or financial benefit here. Clearly, we'll catch up at some point again, um, since we just reintroduced ourselves or maybe just introduced ourselves. Uh, but I, I don't have any personal or financial benefit, so unless someone feels that they would prefer, I recuse. Um, I feel comfortable with this.
Okay, entirely your choice. Okay, um, so is there a motion to appoint, um, Mr. Ritchie as the part-time inspector?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
So you know where to find me, and I know where to find you, and we'll, we'll catch up.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, so next up is the library patron services assistant. David, so, uh, David had told us that the meeting wasn't posted, but does it have to be that the library...
Yep, so there's three items for the library. One is, is for the Board of Selectment to ratify Ms. Smith's appointment. Uh, that you can do.
Okay.
You can also accept Christine Altieri's resignation. However, you cannot have a joint meeting in order to appoint the new person. We'll do that the next meeting.
Okay.
Just after post.
Yeah.
Okay, so would you like to introduce us to Ms. Smith?
Sure, so this is Caitlin Smith. Um, she is in graduate school at U.R.I., and she'll be finished at the end of the semester, right? Um, she interned with us for seven weeks, um, in September and half of October. She's also was a child of the West Bridgewater Public Library. Um, we had eighteen applicants, and we interviewed the top four who had the most experience, and Caitlin was by far the one who fit in the best with us and, um, what she's looking for, so I look forward to working with her.
That's great. Congrats to see that an intern became an employee. Um, any questions or problems?
No, congratulations on soon to be finishing school and, and joining the team.
I don't have any questions.
Alright, um, so is there a motion to ratify Ms. Smith's employment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Um, so, next on the agenda is the recreational space. Greg, is everyone here that's presenting?
I think I think who's presenting, uh, is Jen Cummington.
Oh, Jen, okay.
Alright, um, so that's it for the library, right?
That is, unless you wanna do the resignation and just take a vote to table the, um, Selectment Business B. If you wanna table it while they're here, you can do that as well.
Sure, so we'll move down to, um, item A, except Christine Altieri's recognition, resignation.
With a letter of thanks, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, um, a motion to table the joint mo- meeting between the library trustees.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Alright. So if you guys wanna sit and maybe come up. Um, so over the past couple of years, um, we've all been working on the recreational space committee. Jeff Ryan, who's participated immensely, wasn't able to be here tonight, um, so I think Greg's gonna take lead on this presentation of what we've been working on and some, um, what we're gonna be, what we're planning to move forward to town meeting. So, is yours?
Yeah, um, and, and we'll actually be a joint effort. I'll lead it, and then I'll turn it over to Val, and Glenn, which I mean, and David as well, so. I'm getting too tired of my voice running on. Um, thank you all, welcome. As Anthony mentioned, we are here to talk about the recreational space committee. Let's go to the next slide. Um, the agenda tonight, who we are, what the problem is, how we're going to fix it or propose how to fix it, the cost in voting, the tax impact, and the timeline post-vote. Just to go over the committee, um, we have had this committee in place since 2019, and actually all but one of the members have been on the committee since day one. So, um, just reading off the screen at the beginning, David Gagny, Chris Anatelli. Tim's our newest member. John Delano was on the committee, um, until recently, when he obviously has retired, but he's been an immense help to the committee as well over the years. Um, Jim Fox behind the finance committee, Jenny Hamble, who couldn't be here tonight, athletic director. The, um, the high school has quite a few playoff games coming up this week, so I'm very happy for them, but that was part of the reason why I think she's out here tonight. Um, Glenn Turner to represent the W.B.Y.F.A., myself representing the W.B.Y.A. Uh, Jeff Ryan, who, like Anthony said, cannot be here tonight, but representing the boosters, and then Bill Foo next to me for the school committee. So the mission of the committee was to assess the current space availability, identify the needs and locations, and then to determine the funding options. Next slide. So, so the problem in summary, um, the to- the town has grown quite a bit over the last twenty years. David may speak to it more later, but the forecasted growth includes an additional hundred-plus homes in the next couple of years. A big point to make is that despite that growth, there has not been a lot of additional new facilities for sports in town, with the exception of a youth ba- youth baseball field in the past twenty years. Um, we actually lost a couple fields when the new high school was built, so it's been actually a net loss for us over the last twelve years. Um, as it says on the screen, organized activities are a crucial part of the normality of society. If you have kids, um, we wanna keep them off their phones and electronic devices and, and out on the fields playing sports instead, so that, that is a big, big need for us. Um, the current fields are overused, you know, Howard Field, the Lower Howard Field, which is closer to, um, Howard Street. We have maintenance issues and flooding, as well as at the high school baseball field, which although it is fairly new, we've had some major flooding issues there as well. Um, and, and as noted there, uh, makes our fields unsafe. And then field time's limited due to increased volume of players. You know, you may see Glenn's organization, the Y.A.A., practicing along the side of Spring Street, um, on the little parcel of land next to the Spring Street School, for example. We're just trying to cram in the kids anywhere we can find, because just, there's just not enough space. Um, and then at the high school level, you know, it is limiting growth due to the lack of facilities. You know, when we first started meeting with C.H.A., you know, they, we talked a little bit about lacrosse and talked about the fact that we don't offer lacrosse in town, and they were, the, both of the guys in the back are very surprised. We don't offer lacrosse at any level. It's just one example of the sport, but, you know, part of that has to do with just the lack of facilities. Over to the right, the chart that talks about the number of players. What we tried to do each organization there, the Y.A.A., the Y.A.A., and the high school, um, was to try to segregate out who plays what sports. And one of the things we also did there, so for soccer, for example, the four hundred and forty-two for, for my organization, um, that is unique player, so if, if a child plays, say, fall soccer, spring soccer, indoor soccer, they only got counted one time. So, in the past year, we had four hundred and forty-two unique children play. There might be a little overlap on the high school level with some of the travel soccer and the springtime. There are some kids that play both, not that many, but, but all in all, those are fairly unique numbers in terms of who plays what. Same with football. There might be some kids that play football and town soccer, for example, but the ninety-three represents unique children playing football, to get to the total. And then on the right, you know, just, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, the, based on the projected population for 2030, we, we kinda estimated out what, what those numbers might look like with the, with the expected growth in the population of the town of West Bridgewater of ten thousand. Next slide. And, and so that comes to how do we fix it? So as I mentioned at the beginning, um, the committee's been meeting since 2019. We, during that timeframe, have toured every athletic facility, indoor and outdoor, in this town. Um, we spent the last couple of years identifying all the issues. This was not a, you know, a rash decision, just said these are the sports we need and move on. This was, um, a lot of work spent on really where the needs are. Um, many of these needs will be addressed here tonight, which includes increasing the number of used sports fields, which will be, you know, which I'll cover in a minute, the Russo Intergenerational Park over on Lincoln Street, um, as well as increasing the number of fields for the high school sports, the middle, senior high school field. And then lastly, some of the outdoor facilities to meet our current needs, such as pickleball courts, which is one of the fastest-growing sports in America that we have done in this town. Um, we don't have a suitable outdoor basketball court in, anywhere in this town. Um, we used to have two full courts behind the old high school. Those went away when we built the new high school, so we don't have any full courts there. Um, the additional tennis court, what Bill might touch on later as well. When the varsity high school team plays those tennis matches, there are supposed to be five matches going at the same time. When we built the tennis courts in the back, we only built four courts, so there's always a wait anytime we have a home game to have that fifth, fifth match play, when in reality, all, all of them should be playing at the same time. And then also, um, at the intergeneral, intergenerational complex, walking trails, both A.B. accessible as well as, you know, if you wanna go a little deeper into the woods there as well. Um, and then lastly, uh, not addressed here on this slide, but we'll talk about a little bit later, would be the indoor basketball court, which, again, we'll talk about later in the presentation. So as I mentioned before, you know, West Bridgewater is experiencing some significant growth. At 2010, we were just under seven thousand residents. Ten years later, we are up to seventy-seven hundred, which is eleven and a half percent increase. And then some of the current building permits, you know, there's ninety-three or four-bedroom homes going up on Scotland Street, as all of us know, um, so we estimate three hundred and sixty people there. Twenty-four apartments going up are one oh six, fifty-four apartments on that field. And then, David, if you wanna speak to this later as well, state mandated seven hundred and fifty housing units by right, um, which would be another twenty-two hundred. So without any other housing development, which, you know, for, for those of us that have lived here for a while, I don't know where else they can put homes in this town, but, um, even, you know, with doing nothing else but what's on this screen, we're, you know, we're estimating over ten thousand residents in the next ten years, eight years, I should say. So just to touch on the intergenerational park a bit, uh, over on Lincoln Street, the highlights of the complex would be two turf fields. Um, the fields will meet the requirements for soccer, which, as like you saw on the chart, is the largest sport in town. But in addition to that, it will fulfill the needs of football, so, you know, they wouldn't have to worry about practicing on Spring Street or biding for time, uh, with the high school on the football field. It gives the, you know, fields hockey and lacrosse, you know, the Y.A., we would love to offer those sports to give kids additional outlets to play sports, because not everyone plays, you know, baseball, softball, soccer, basketball. Uh, and all of those can be played within the dimensions of a soccer field. Um, both fields will be lighted to extend the time that the fields can be used. And then maintenance is low with water having minimal effect. You know, Jeff, Ryan, and Nadia tonight's brought up in some meetings where, um, you know, where, where it rains, we have to cancel soccer practice typically on Howard Field. Turf fields over at the high school, it may rain all, all day and then stop at two o'clock, and they're practicing or having a game at four o'clock, 'cause it's just not the maintenance issues and worrying about the mud and, you know, just the sloperiness, so to speak, of the fields. Um, the complex will also include walking trails, a small playground, um, a, a small grassy area for some of the young children, you know, siblings of players to play at during the games or practices. And then, as I mentioned earlier, some of the trails will be A.B. accessible. Um, also on the complex, an outdoor basketball court, four pickleball courts, restroom and storage. And the, the field closest to Lincoln Street will also have drive-up parking, so for those of you that have kids that play sports, sometimes whether it's an April game or a November game, grandparents or parents don't necessarily wanna get out of the car because it's freezing out. They don't really care that much enough to wanna sit in the cold to watch the games, if I'm being honest. I'm, I'm one of those myself, as a, as a parent of four, so I've been there, too. So you could actually pull right up and watch the game from your car, which would be nice, you know, nice for those, especially, you know, elderly grandparents, things like that. And then lastly, we'll, we'll talk about it a little more later as well, but it may include space for the food pantry. Jeff, David, and myself went and toured the food pantry last week, or week and a half ago. Um, although it is a great facility that they're in right now under twenty-eight, the costs between the rents, the real estate taxes, and utilities are just prohibitive for them from a long-term standpoint, so it's a very important, um, part of this town, and we're trying to find ways to help them as well. So just to give some graphics of the field, the, you know, the conceptual plan, as I mentioned, the, the synthetic turf fields, the two east and west fields, um, you'll note on the left here on Lincoln Street, as I mentioned, about the, the parking lot along the side there was where you'd be able to pull up to watch from your car. Um, lighted and fenced, restored water features, the pickleball courts, the basketball courts, the playground and turf areas, parking for a hundred and twenty-nine cars, which we do think is sufficient for this complex. And then sidewalk will be on Lincoln Street, which I believe is part of the, um, was part of the deal with building the, uh, storage facility across the street on Lincoln. And then just another view that was provided to us, you'll note, too, that there are two storage buildings servicing each field, so one down the bottom here, closer to Lincoln Street, and then one closer to the back field. Um, we'll have a support building with restrooms, as I mentioned before, and expandable food pantry with separate entrance from parking. That's about it for that slide. And then lastly, the support building, um, as I said before, restrooms, grab-and-go concessions, so it's like a small snack shack where you can grab like candy, soda, things like that to be sold. And then expandable food pantry with a separate entrance from parking. So the way it's laid out, as it is today, would be, as you see, seven hundred and fifty square feet for the food pantry. And there is room for future expansion as well, and then, as you can see, concessions, uh, the small porch, bathrooms, et cetera. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to David to talk, I mean, to Bill to talk about the high school field improvements.
Hello, everybody. Um, uh, just like to say, uh, Jen could not be here tonight. It's an exciting week out at the high school. Uh, we have, uh, we have the field hockey team in the tournament tomorrow, going up to Ipswich. The football team's headed out to Wyconer on Friday. Both boys and girls soccer are gonna be home in their tournament games on Friday and Saturday, respectively. And volleyball is actually gonna be home Friday night also, so it's busy at the high school. A lot of state tournament stuff going on, so, uh, very proud of the high school athletes and kids. They've had a tremendous season. So, but, uh, moving forward with this, uh, uh, the current problem with the baseball field is the drainage. Um, yeah, the baseball coach, Jack Outerbridge, has done a tremendous job over the years trying to get that field ready. That home plate area is just down a little too much, and he, he takes his own personal time, and he's been up there doing a lot of work, trying to get that thing ready year in, year out. And then we've had Justin May and his company, Justin's a graduate, uh, of the high school, and Justin has spent his own personal time up there with his company on two or three different times already this year trying to get this field, uh, ready to go, get all the weeds out of it and everything, um, so we'd like to thank him as well. Uh, but the field needs to be upgraded as much as possible. And then you have, uh, Chris and Sean's guys, uh, trying to keep, um, the Howard Fields going, and when we get a lot of rain, but, um, we can't practice, sometimes the soccer teams can't practice. And with an addition of maybe having this baseball field turfed over, it would, uh, help the baseball team and, you know, we would not have the problem with all the water and everything. We could also move some of the soccer, field hockey over to the high school and be kind of, uh, ha- have a different, uh, I don't know, time scale that we could play a lot more games on campus at the high school. And also, people would be able to be at the school watching two different games. You have kids and everything around. And, uh, as Greg had said, too, we had numerous games this year. It rained all day, but by two, three o'clock, it was okay. The turf fields are fine and they're playable. We'd also like to put some, uh, lights out there as well, as we get darker here in the fall, um, and, and be able to have more use out of the fields and whatnot. So, uh, there would be, you know, I don't think the lighting is in the project just yet, but we'd like to, uh, maybe move that, uh, forward. And also, with maybe some lacrosse down the, down the road and, you know, middle school sports. So, um, if we could move down a little bit. Here's a little picture of what we would have as far as the soccer field into the outfield. Soccer field would be a, uh, uh, regulation-sized field that could be used by the high schools, and it, you know, it doesn't cut into the baseball field. Everything would be turfed, and it would be multi-use all, all, uh, all season, all fall, and then into the spring as well. Um, if we can move forward. Uh, just then on the picture of, uh, the high school, uh, what it would look like with that turf field, you can see the lower left-hand corner, uh, the turf field that the, you know, the field hockey, soccer teams and football teams play on. Um, and then as we move backwards, you can see in the top, uh, right-hand corner, the tennis courts that are out back. Um, I think if we go to the next slide, we can take a look at that. So what we're proposing is to add one more tennis court, as Greg, um, had suggested, that tennis at the high school is a five, five different matches going on at once. And when it was built, for some reason, we're, we're not sure, we think there might have been an issue out back where we couldn't expand as much as we did, um, and I think John Delano and Tim have kinda looked at it a little bit more and think we do have the possibility now of moving this and getting our fifth tennis court over there. We do have basketball on the tennis court right now, but it's not really usable. It's in the middle of the tennis courts. The kids, you know, if somebody wants to play tennis, somebody wants to play basketball. It's not usable, so we've, uh, proposed to put in a full-size basketball court up at the high school as well. Um, and, and I think that might be about it as far as the changes going up to the high school.
Yeah, one other note, just for clarification purposes, too, the, the baseball field, uh, may have a couple sites prior with the, with the turf soccer, soccer field. That's in the existing space. There is no expansion of space there. It's, it's within the existing space that we have now. Thank you.
Now, or to Glenn?
On to me. I'm Glenn Turner. I'm representing the W.B.Y.F.A., uh, which is Youth Football and Cheer. Um, what we're looking at here is the Howard School property. Um, up on the right-hand side, there is a current basketball court there now. For anybody that's been over to it, it's, uh, it's been fairly rundown for a number of years, and what this would do, this would enlarge the surface, and also it would be resurfaced, and have new hoops and nets for that basketball court, and it would be in the same spot. And then over to the left, uh, there's a large piece of land behind the Council on Aging, uh, where you can see four pickleball courts, uh, which were the use for the Council on Aging. Anybody else? Go on to the next one. Again, this is just a different view of what I just talked about. Howard School with the, uh, resurfaced basketball court and pickleball courts on the left.
And one of the reasons we put the, uh, pickleball courts on this side versus the Howard side is to allow people to use them during the school day, because if they were on, if they were close to the Howard side, when you got recess and things like that, it'll be hard for the kids to play, or, or, you know, seniors or anyone else that wants to play pickleball. By keeping them separate, those could still be used during, during the school day.
And this request came from members of the Council on Aging. They had attended a couple of our meetings back when we first, um, kicked it off. Uh, one, if you could just flip back to the, the previous slide, uh, one thing that is not on here, which we've talked about, there would be a, um, like a walkway coming from the Council on Aging up to the pickleball courts, so it wouldn't just be people walking across grass and mud and, uh, wet, wet surface. So that note would be added also. Alright. Uh, let's see, court improvements and additions, um, as I said earlier, we'd be replacing the existing basketball court. It's in rough shape. New hoops, new surface. Uh, would be slightly expanded. And again, the Council on Aging would be creating four pickleball courts, uh, where we're shown in the previous slide. Um, and as what, uh, Bill had said earlier, the one tennis court at the high school along the existing courts. Uh, one note on the, on the existing tennis courts, uh, another reason why basketball really isn't played there is because tennis, um, the net poles are permanent, and they're kinda like, uh, like basically in, in the court. They're not removable. Uh, Bill had mentioned, there's, when there's five matches, they need five. Bill had mentioned there's, when there's five matches, they need five courts. We apparently only have four. And a full-size basketball court behind the high school, because there isn't one currently in town. And as Greg had mentioned earlier, originally in our discussions for the Russo Intergenerational Park, we had identified the needs for a better, for, for better basketball facilities. As part of the original proposal, we had requested that the Russo Intergenerational Park include a building with two indoor courts, which would be similar, would be basically the same size as the high school gym, except the building, which would include like snack shack facilities, bathrooms, some storage and so on. The, the committee decided to remove this building from the proposal due to the result of the cost of it being approximately nine million dollars. This roughly doubled the cost of the complex and the committee didn't believe that this would be fiscally, fiscally responsible at the time. Is that still me? Yeah, this was just an overview of it, including the large field house. Oh, yes, yeah. So same overview as we saw earlier, minus the outdoor basketball court and the outdoor pickleball courts, with the building that I had just mentioned put back in place. It would cut down on the parking. It would be a multipurpose gymnasium and little pickleball courts and a basketball court. Two sideways courts and then a full-length court, just like the high school has. We have retractable seating. Let's see. And as I had mentioned, this would be about nine million dollars and parking would be cut down substantially.
Could I just ask a quick question, please? On the first rendition, how many parking spaces did you have?
Was it one seventy-five, Greg?
No, I think it was one thirty-nine.
One forty?
For one forty, I think.
One forty, and the second rendition is one fifteen. It just, the one fifteen looks small. It doesn't look like you'd have a, enough parking.
You can see them all along Lincoln Street as well.
Yeah, I see them. I'm just thinking, you know, how many teams could potentially be playing at the same time? And then you have parents and friends and the kids that drive themselves. It just.
It's a difference of one twenty-nine to one fifteen, fourteen.
Yeah, either way, it just doesn't look like a lot of parking.
And how many pickleball courts without, so you took the pickleball courts out, that leaves four over at the, how many were in the drawing without the building?
Four.
Four.
So there were four here.
Four here and four at the council on aging.
Oh, wow, that's a lot of pickleball.
Yeah, so basically if you do not have this facility here, you would have four pickleball courts at this location, four at the other front row. I will tell you, we are already concerned that at eight, we could use more based on the growing trend of the sport. But something is better than nothing, but you're entirely correct, Mary. Is that if we build this building, you do lose fifty percent of the pickleball court capacity.
But then you add two gyms.
Possible indoor pickleball.
Ooh, see, it's all marketing. Italian.
How you wrap the gift.
It's how you wrap the gifts.
So I'm still stuck on that boring subject of parking. We'll be able to park along the street, right?
Along the street, obviously.
No. Carl, did you guys have metrics on how many spots per field? Did we go over that at one meeting?
We did, and, and the, the thought here was that, that, you know, typically you might not get simultaneous usage.
Okay.
We're not talking about a lot of courts and, and actually the building can extend its hours into the evening hours as well when you might not have. Although the heat-loving lighting fields, you, you might stagger the, the, the use pattern in these. And then there, there is the possibility in that, that, that large of a gym to have close to four to six pickleball courts in, inside as well.
Oh, wow. Inside pickleball.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it would be a flexible gym space, really, like you have at the high school. And you can really fill those up. They're pretty small courts.
So it wouldn't actually be losing the pickleball courts. I mean, that's one way to look at it.
Yeah, my turn.
Mm-hmm. Such a big project. I would love to see that building.
And I think the entire committee would. I, not to speak for them, but I think everyone wanted the building.
Yeah, I would love to see it as well.
Just stomaching the cost.
Nine versus eighteen million.
Essentially, yeah.
So I imagine we're going on to numbers. Sorry, we're interrupting your presentation, aren't we?
Say sorry.
Fine. All good questions.
We can move on to the next one.
That's just again, an aerial view of what we just talked about. Showing the same storage buildings where they were on the left in, in the rear also of those fields. That's just head of the building. And that's, this is your side views, rear views of that building. Showing you all the storage on the right-hand side, out there would be exterior storage, also interior storage. You've got utility-type storage, maintenance. We did, in, in this one, have an area leaning towards the food pantry discussion in the front left, in that picture on the right, next to the mechanical room, the electrical room. There'd be an entrance with a porch up in the top right, lobby. Men, women's bathrooms, also a family restroom, both. You get to both of them from interior and exterior.
Oh, I like that. You can access them from the outside even if the building is, you don't have to go in.
It was designed to kind of look a little like a bar and tutor sort of fit in with the community. We, we liked it.
Yeah, we really, we really, she, she, credit to them. They did a great job. It really came off beautiful.
So everybody else could do the fun part. I've talked more money. So the complex itself, the projected cost is about eight point seven million dollars. That is without the building. So that will include two fields, the outdoor pickleball courts, the, the trails and the playground area. Cost from now will be a little over just under nine million. The high school baseball field improvements will be re-turfing the existing baseball field and turfing all of it. So it also includes the soccer. And those two, I envision at this point would be separate warrant articles, because they will require a two-thirds vote. On the courts, and we're gonna group all the courts together. So this includes four pickleball courts at the council on aging, the basketball court at the Howard Field, and the basketball court and the tennis court behind the high school. The projected cost for all of those is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That I would recommend to the board that we pay free cash with that, which has already been certified through the Department of Revenue, and that will require just a simple majority vote. Excellent. So this here is how it impacts everybody in their taxes, assuming a positive vote. So you can see for each entire, each one as to what the annual debt service would be inside the budget and also what the tax impact would be to the right. We did not include the large field house in this, in this graphic. So I will say roughly, it would be about double, but it won't be entirely double, because the, most of the complex and the turf field is only a fifteen-year bond, and the building could be a thirty-year bond. So even though nine million dollars in theory would be a simple double of all these numbers, because we can extend it over time, it will have less of an impact on the taxes. And if people are really comfortable with looking at that, then we'll do, we'll run the numbers and we'll have those exact numbers at town meeting.
So this is how many years to you?
So on, on.
This illustration is ten.
So on all the building stuff, it would be, on the building ones, it would be thirty years. On the Russo complex and the turf, it would be for fifteen years. So line one is thirty, line two, line three is fifteen.
So if you were to estimate with the building, you're looking about four hundred?
I think so. I would say probably around four hundred. So not a, but again, I, I want to do the math.
Right, right.
Two fifty, two fifty is five hundred. It might be four and a quarter, but somewhere in the fours. Again, this is based on an average home of three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. So if your home is worth less, the impact is less. If your home is worth more, then obviously the impact is more. I will state as well, is that we mentioned earlier in the slide, so we have a lot of growth in town. We already know that currently in the permitting phase, we already have about two hundred homes and apartments being built. And also, as you're going to see on here, is that we have a minimum of two additional warehouses to be built, plus the one that's already been permanent on Lincoln Street that we went to town meeting for. The reason I say all that is because that is a lot of new growth that will continue to spread out the tax base. So as all of those come on with more properties paying and more large commercial properties as well, the tax impact actually over time will be reduced as opposed to increase.
And we do have several commercial projects in town in process.
Correct.
So it's going to be even less than that.
Yeah, but as of today, that is a snapshot, but you're entirely correct. The tax impact will actually get minimized as all of those projects come online.
Until we need to build a new school.
No doubt that that is.
With the expansion we, we're seeing, I mean, Mark is, Mark Baldwin is already out specing that, so. I mean, I'm in favor of this. I'm just stating the, stating the facts.
I'm in favor of this with the big, with the indoor basketball fields, honestly. I mean, with all the growth coming in town, I know I see it with my own kids around town. There's just not enough space.
If, if I could say one thing too about the whole, the whole high school. When the high school got built, we had our meetings and we were told that it was gonna cost X amount of dollars, this type of meeting. The Board of Selectmen, and I'm not sure if David was involved yet or not, but the town has done such a good job with that. Those numbers really did not come to fruition of how much we're actually gonna be costing in our taxes. It was much, much lower. So this is, I think, is a, a little bit higher of a number than what to expect. But the, the Board of Selectmen and everybody who worked on that project really deserve a great amount of credit here for not, you know, for actually bringing those numbers down. And some of the things that the, the town has done to raise money to keep those costs down. So, I mean, I think that, that sort of stuff can also be done with this project as well. And yes, there is going to be new schools. It, it is coming. It's going to have to happen. We're just, with the, the amount of, you know, if we're looking at ten thousand people in this town in, you know, less than, you know, six, seven years, it's, it's gonna happen. So, so the town has done, the town is very fiscally responsible, so I think that needs to be said and people need to hear that. Because there's a lot of things that are out there that, that are paying for this and paying for that, and the taxes have gone up. But I think the town has really done a good job with the new high school.
Oh, I think, I think overall, the town's done a great job with the, we've had fairly low impact on taxes over the past several years, and we've still managed to do a lot of projects. I just wouldn't want anyone to see that two hundred and forty-eight dollars and, and think, wow, that's a great, that looks like a great number to me. It really does. And I expect it will hover right around there. What, what interest rate are you looking at?
Uh, starting, my, my guess is probably at today's rate, the four and a half percent. Because we just, we go way to, it's a calculator we use through the Department of Revenue.
Four and a half that I just quoted on these, yeah, but it just went up another three-quarters this morning, so.
I, I, I didn't use Timo's rates.
It's, it's changing, it's changing quickly.
Yes. Next slide. So whenever we look at costs, there's always two costs. There's upfront costs and there's going to be operating costs after that. So we know with the, the huge benefit, as was alluded to earlier from Greg, is that when it rains out, the fields stay really nice and dry, and so that way they're usable. But they obviously require some type of maintenance. We would have to purchase at least one or two grooming machines. They would be the same machine, it's just a matter of whether or not we want to groom both fields at the exact same time or not. Each grooming machine is estimated to cost around eight thousand dollars. In order to maintain the clubhouse, youth sports and youth football would be the, the primary users of the clubhouse. And as a result, it's envisioned that there would be some type of an agreement between those associations and the Board of Selectmen about being able to pay for the utilities and also maintain it in those types of items. And if a food pantry also ends up there, then they would be part of that agreement as well. It's also envisioned at this point is that the DPW to groom the fields, maintain trash removal on the outside, cut grass and trim back walkways. We'd originally thought that maybe having the youth sports groom the fields, but I think that would be unfair. We want to make sure that those fields are properly maintained and there's no damage to it, and also that it gets routinely done. So if we use a DPW person, we're estimating from a time equivalent basis over time, is probably about a half a person. That doesn't mean we're going to add half a person. It just means that if we were to add up all of the time, we're assuming that half a person over about six or seven months of equivalent time is what would be invested into these fields. And we're also guessing somewhere around five thousand dollars in materials, such as mulch and seed. And again, I want to make sure that because these are turf fields, we're not seeding the fields, but there is some grass areas around it that still have to be maintained. We're gonna need a governing board. So again, the way currently envisioned and still a work in progress is that if the food pantry is going to be there, our recommendation at this point is that there would be a governing board appointed by the Board of Selectmen of about five people, because you want to make sure that it always remains odd, I mean, odd number, not odd people. And one from each of the sports associations and the food pantry into a large. And if the food pantry is not there, then a quarter of three. And the thought process is, is that, for example, there is going to be conflicts. Does one association, the other association on a Tuesday night want to play? And if so, how do we manage that? I am positive that I am not equipped to handle that, nor do I have the time, and I know the Board of Selectmen won't be able to do it either. And I think that the people that are intimately involved have the best knowledge and expertise, and they should be able to figure that part out. There's gonna be simple little things like who pays the referees, you know, items, who's going to hire the janitors, all that type of stuff. I think that we can, that there's room for that governing board to handle that. And again, under that agreement, the Board of Selectmen representing the town will always have the right to make the changes as necessary.
And I would just add on the things like referees and, you know, even some of the field maintenance. We do that already at the ball fields, you know, we, we, the YIA basically covers that all ourselves. We hire referees, we hire people to clean, or we have volunteers to clean ourselves line the fields, all that stuff. So, you know, whether it's the, the DPW managing the fields or us helping between the YFA and the YIA, we're totally willing to help. I mean, it, it will, it will lessen our load just due to the fact that they have turf fields and not having to go out and, you know, do all the soccer lines, which takes hours and hours of work. That, that time is now gone, so we're happy to help chip in as far as cleaning and maintenance and things like that. Just to quickly close this out with some key dates. We did our draft presentation on the twenty-sixth of the recreational space committee. Obviously tonight we're meeting to present this.
That should be November fourteenth.
That's what I thought of. Thank you. November fourteenth, we will hold an informational session for residents. Part of the reason for doing that, as we've talked as a committee, is similar to what we did with the golf course purchase years ago, which is to try to answer as many questions upfront as possible. So they come, the special town meeting on December fifth. We've addressed a lot of those concerns already. Obviously, we've recorded, people can watch it. So the hope is that it's not a marathon meeting on the fifth. So December, as I said, December fifth will be the special town meeting. The following month, if, if the project is approved, we would start the designer selection process. Between January and March, that, that process and the bidding would start. Then in May, October, would be the construction. I will note, if we go down the road of including the basketball facility, this, the timeline would change, because obviously not having to build a building would expedite the, the process. So the May twenty twenty-three, October twenty twenty-three is based on just the outdoor facilities that we have is presented tonight. And then spring of twenty twenty-four would be when it would likely be open for recreation, ideally. You know, during the wintertime, we don't use the soccer fields outdoors. So there, it could be done by the end of twenty twenty-three potentially, but it's just off-season. So most of those fields, I mean, the basketball courts and the pickleball courts, if, if they were there and, and not the basketball facility, if there was a nice seasonal day and there was no silt on the ground, those might get used. But short of that, those fields wouldn't be used until the spring. And with that, we will open it up for any further questions.
Can I just say one thing? I just really wanted to thank CHA, because I think they did a wonderful job. And they really worked with us and listened to us and listened to what we thought, you know, the ideas that the committee brought and other people that joined the meetings, and they were very thoughtful about the whole process, so I just wanted to thank them.
That's a great job.
I think I just want to thank everyone for their time. I know sometimes being on a board is a thankless job, and there's always going to be some criticism of why not this and what about that? And appreciate the fact that everyone volunteers. And it, it takes effort to, especially a project of this size. Uh, this was very informative. I don't think I have any questions, honestly, but I, I just would extend gratitude to everyone who participated in this project.
Lots of gratitude, absolutely. And of course, I have to ask about grants or CPA funds. Lots of gratitude, absolutely, and of course I have to ask about grants or CPA funds, is any of that available to be used on a project like this?
There are CPA funds are not available, at this point there are no grants, I will tell you that Blue Cross Blue Shield, they are offering a fifty thousand dollar grant. Currently, uh it's highly competitive. But it's also to build something that we don't have in here, which is basically an outdoor calisthenics park. Which will run more than fifty thousand, so I'm so I'm not so sure that, here we just rename it.
Can we call it pickleballs?
But it's specific to what has to be built, it's gonna cost more than fifty, and we go backwards in pricing, but to my knowledge, outside of those, there are not additional grants available.
Specialized funding, lower interest rates, anything favorable in that manner? I mean, I suppose those are questions for Scott, I'm just kinda spitballing a little bit, no, but I think this is fantastic, I I love it, you guys have done a fantastic job. I really like the idea of a building, but that is of course up to all the residents and and voters. Um so no, thank you all for what you've you this whole project.
We did toss around maybe a campaign about if, you know, people wanted to donate and buy the scoreboard or, you know, something like that. You know, that there's options like that too.
There's already one over there, we could steal the Y A's.
Need another baseball field, we need another scoreboard.
How about how about turn and steal fieldhouse?
Set your goals high.
I'll spend a lot of time there, I can say that uh from my standpoint, and we were talking about maintenance and. Um you know, having a board that runs this thing, that I would love to be involved in that. Um I'm aging out of youth sports, my kids, and. Um being a part of this project with the diverse group that we've had has been a joy. And seeing how you um how we've really taken the time to go through the town and really explore the issue. So, I'm look I'm looking forward to it.
Would that be an appointment, would we appoint?
So as I envision, I mean ultimately it'll be the board's decision, but as I envision it, is that you would enter into an agreement, the Board of Selectmen would appoint it. And I personally, I think um one would be an excellent choice to be the at-large person because he would fully understand all the youth sports. Um you know, if you were no longer actually part of the football association, having be the at-large person, you would be an excellent choice.
And then we could get the building from you. Right, that was a donation. No pressure, no pressure. Looks great.
All right, any other?
Do we need to make a motion?
Nope.
No.
Nope, so uh our next meeting will be doing that. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
So as a result of the presentation, I mean, we would be asked.
Now?
Yeah, so there's so many agendas to vote in the special town meeting.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, uh closing date?
So it asks to have a vote to set the special town meeting date of December fifth at six P M in the middle school, high school, mandatory.
Some move.
That's the, to set the date?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um can I just ask a question? Once you set the. No, actually, excuse me, it was, it had to do with opening the warrant, um second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And then is there a motion to open the special town meeting warrant?
Some move.
Okay, so this is where I have a question. Sorry about that, uh the the. Meeting to introduce this project to the residents is November fifteenth, is that correct?
Fourteenth.
No, uh November fourteenth.
Okay.
The day before our meeting, so we strategically intentionally put it the day before our meeting in case we wanted to change the warrant.
Okay, perfect, that's what I wanted to make sure that that there was a day apart there.
Yep.
Um second.
I'm all in favor.
Aye.
And to. Set a closing date of, so.
What I would like to do is that I would like to do a closing date of November, we have two choices, do, I would prefer to do November tenth. At four P M, which is a Thursday, because Friday is a holiday. The first question is going to be asked, okay, but we're going to have our public hearing.
Right.
On Tuesday, on Monday evening. If we don't close it until Tuesday afternoon. Um I can already have the warrant articles prepared before that night, cause I can prepare six of them. And then that night determine, get rid of two or three based on the feedback of that night. Uh but if we make it on Tuesday, that means that a different department for the first time can walk in fresh. At twelve o'clock and give me a warrant article, which is only gonna give me five hours to vet it before you vote on it that night. Cause you're meeting the fifteenth. I'm not gonna have enough time to review it, vet it, and have council review it. So my personal opinion is, I think that I would ask that we close it in November tenth. At four P M, because I will write all the articles in advance and then I can always delete something. But I'm not gonna, you know, it's, I think that's the better approach.
But then we're closing it before the public meeting, that they.
Because I already know what the warrant articles are going to be for this.
We can still change them slightly, correct, on the fifteenth?
Oh yeah, absolutely. If you're you're going to have final authorities, cause you may even decide not to place them on. So you can choose not to place them on and you can change the wording. But if we do it on November fifteenth, we can't do it on November fourteenth in advance of the hearing, so we have to do it on November fifteenth. And because we've moved the meeting from the sixteenth to the fifteenth, I just don't have enough time on that date to receive it in and do do all the necessary work. If I knew someone would turn it in earlier, that'd be okay, but some people really li- literally wait until the last minute. I am unaware of a lot of articles, but I am aware of at least one department that wants to turn something in. So your choice, it's either we can do November tenth. Um which is what my preference would be, and I will write the warrant articles in advance. Um and uh and then on the fifteenth, we can always delete, change whatever. Um or you could just do it on November fifteenth and I'll do the best I can. As you know, on the board day, my time becomes really crunched because I speak to each one of you, go over the agenda, go over everything, put in the packet together. Um so if we do do it that day. It's more apt to have an error.
Okay, I mean, I'm fine with November tenth at noon, I mean, we know what these warrant articles are gonna be, and we can. Adjust them as we see fit after the public um meeting on the fourteenth.
And that's what Anthony had recommended, because he's also chair of this committee. Was he thought it was important to collect that feedback before we posted the warrant article, so you could make those adjustments.
So we're we're closing date for the warrant articles is going to be the tenth?
That would be my recommendation, I would ask at four P M.
Okay. And when will we see these warrant articles as a board?
We'll go over them on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth.
Tuesday night, the fifteenth, you will go over them, and you will approve them. Because they will have to be posted a few days later in a council schedule.
But we can change them as we feel necessary, any wording?
Yes.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
And again, you'll have received the feedback from the public hearing, so you'll have really good, fresh information.
Okay.
So uh does that deadline apply to us, are we able to put up? Ourselves a article on the warrant, after a deadline?
Um what I would do is if I knew if one of you were like, hey, we need to add it, if you was chair want to add it. On that agenda, you would reopen the warrant, add it, and close it. To be honest with you, because you have full authority, if you wanna make sure nothing else was on the warrant, you could open it now. Say, hey, Dave, take a recess for fifteen minutes and write these up really fast, cause you can change the language later, and then close it tonight. And nobody else could add anything. Um probably a little unfair, uh but you have that legal authority to do so, so you can reopen anytime you want, add um at your leisure.
So is there a motion? Sorry.
Sorry about that, when do we have to post by?
We have to post by that Friday.
That Friday.
Even though it's a holiday?
The following Friday, so your meeting will be on the fifteenth, and by that Friday I have to post. And usually you will take a motion subject to time council final review, so that way if we still have questions and a couple of little words. Um we have, we buy ourselves a couple of extra days to do that.
Good, so is there a motion to close the warrant November tenth at four P M?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to appoint Paul Golda as an election worker?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um. Digital message board, forty-four Pleasant Street, uh this is going to the Z B A, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, right?
This is another building.
Oh, this is a.
This is a different or insane road, um it's actually across the street, I think if you go one more maybe, I think there's a picture of it, there it is. Um so same road, they're just gonna convert a current static board into a digital board. But different business looking to do the same thing as Z B A will.
Um which business is this? Yeah.
I um could.
Is this closer to Barrett's?
That's closer to Barrett's, that's not down where um.
Is this the highway?
Uh well.
Something.
What what's that brick building there?
So go back, um yes, no.
Yeah, this is closer to Barrett's.
So that, so that would be closer down towards Route one oh six. Um and they're looking to convert that board to a digital board, it'll go before the zoning board of appeals. And they're the ones that have to um approve it, and it's just a matter of whether you have any comments, but. I don't know, it's zone, commercial, industrial, there is the way that they spread.
There's a few houses on the other side, aren't there?
There's that, there's one house, as you know, across from um.
Yeah, on the other side of the street, there's a couple.
So they're gonna have to be careful with lighting, it looks like they already have the vegetation there.
Well, it's gonna be digital, so that's gonna be lit.
Yeah, the only change is uh changing that to a digital.
Yeah, so I wouldn't have any other comments.
So I'm not in favor of it. I don't know what else I need to say, other than that, I think that's pretty clear.
Um I'm not opposed to it, timing might be more of an issue here, like the hours that it's on or brighter.
Well, it's gonna be on in the dark.
But don't we have a bylaw for digital signs? I know when we were on the bylaw study committee, we went over this quite a bit.
So that was in reference to your large digital board signs, I E. the bill codes, you banned those at a certain time.
All signs can't rotate.
That is correct.
More than once a minute, I believe.
And then it reduced the luminance.
That is correct, so in reference to the digital board sign, there was a recent amendment to it. That allowed, so one time it was only allowed to change once every twenty-four hours. Um now it was reduced um in um in also as to how bright the lights could be. Uh the Z B A historically has taken also the position to be able to limit the hours, so for example, at two o'clock in the morning, it's not lit. And again, there's no value in it at two o'clock in the morning, so most applicants understand that as well.
She's this, there's a few houses across the street. And I don't really see the need for the digital sign. As far as it outweighing. Um some of their peaceful enjoyment of their homes, so. I'm just flat not in favor of it.
So what, do I make a motion to?
Um anyone can make a motion, um whatever, if you wanna send any comments.
Right, it's just sending comments, so it's just a matter of.
So for example, if if um if you wanna take a motion to say that you wanna limit the hours, so therefore it has less of an impact in the area. Anything similar to that will capture that information, will also capture that, um selecting raises against it, and if anybody else is, will add that to the comment page as well.
Yeah, I like that reducing. How bright it is, make sure it's off at night.
Um.
Some move.
To send.
Those comments.
Including I'm not in favor of it at all.
No, no, we can't include that, but right now I think Mary was making a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Send good comments and move on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll capture that and also we'll also capture the misses um um objection as well.
Was that clear enough, just checking.
You wanna put a sad face on there too?
An angry face.
An angry face, right, where is she supposed to sign, it's red marver.
Right, uh there's a proposed hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse building in uh the industrial park, um United, for United Drive. Um.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can tell you that both E. And F are very similar, they're both large warehouses, one's one hundred and fifty thousand, the other one's one thirty. One will be constructed uh where a current um parking lot is. You may remember about a month ago, they had added parking up up at this facilities, because what we didn't know. Was that they were going to propose where the exist- some existing parking is, is to construct a new warehouse. Um so, it's industrial zone, it's an hour industrial park, they'll they'll have two. Um large scale warehouse for uh distribution. Again, I think this is the way of the future, you know, people are not gonna go into stores as much anymore, they're gonna go on their phone, order something, we need warehouse space. Enable to store that those materials. Um so, you can vote on them individually or together, whatever you prefer, but they're both very similar to each other.
Okay, is there a motion to send our full support for these projects, if anyone?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um approve meeting minutes of September twenty-first.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And accept for review the meeting minutes of October fifth.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two vacation carryover requests, one from Wayne Parks for five days, one from Deborah Taylor for three and a half days, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment period, anyone?
Nothing?
Oh, that's right, um I'm sorry, I attended the old Colony Planning Council meeting this past uh week. There were three of us that were nominated by our respective boards to be a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um and I was elected to the board, so I'm excited to continue the next two years on that, congratulations, thank you.
David?
Yeah, so uh real briefly, as you know, we will be hosting the Beckton State Parade this year. Uh we, the the Board of Selectmen, myself and and others normally get together, so we get at nine forty-five A M. Uh is when we will start, we will then march down one oh six and over here into the gazebo. Uh the chair of the Board of Selectmen usually has comments to say on behalf of the town, so that'll be Anthony. Um and again, I wanna say thank you to Annie, I didn't tell you I was town clerk, but she also chairs this committee, and she just does a really excellent job. There's a lot of work behind the scenes that that is done be um is done as a result of it. Uh and again, it's a tri-count, so don't include all three bridge riders. Uh and the last is, it's just an update that we call a. Back in January is a requirement of a new law that was passed for um housing by right. Is that every M B T A community which West Bridgewater is is named, because we were adjacent to Brockton. Is that there is going to be by right housing that is going to be allowed. At that time, they were talking seven hundred and fifty housing units and a minimum density of fifty acres. Um and a lot, as small towns, we all did a lot of pushback. Um quite frankly, we only have three thousand households in the entire town of West Bridgewater. So we would be increasing our household content by about twenty-five percent in one little fifty acre area. As anybody knows, and whenever you increase that type of density, you also increase other issues usually related to police and and EMS, so. We would have a major impact, not to mention seven hundred and fifty times two children or once, we only have thirteen hundred students. So a complex of seven hundred and fifty with two children would actually outnumber our entire school district. Uh which is crazy when you think about it. There is a little bit of slow silver lining in this, is that as a result of that pushback, is that uh I've attended a couple of uh seminars. And it does look like they are going to amend some of their regulations, which looks like will positively affect us. In reducing the overall number, so once I digest it all and ask the questions I need to, I report back to the board. Uh but we may have some good news on this, um so then I'll just keep the board up to date on it.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a public.